Right Chair, we're ready to start.
Right, thank you. Are we on? Good afternoon everyone. Welcome to this remote. Welcome to this remote meeting of the Outer South Community Committee. My name is councillor Neil Dawson and I will be chairing today's meeting. The Outer South Community Committee covers the following wards: Azzley and Robin Hood, Moly North, Moly South and Rothwell. It is a committee where councillors have the opportunity to discuss and make decisions about services and priorities for the local area and consider funding applications regarding local community projects and youth activities. I would like to start the meeting today by confirming that today's Community Committee meets the requirements of the council's constitution even though members are in remote attendance and that members of the public are able to view the meeting via the live webcast. To begin the meeting, could I ask all the members present to mute their microphone unless they're invited to speak. This will avoid disruption and background noise. I'll also mention that if anything happens with my problems with my connection or iPad, then I will ask councillor Ben Garner to step in as to chair the meeting. Could I ask members to introduce themselves? And once you've introduced yourselves, then mute your microphone. I'll start with the Azzley and Robin Hood councillors and we'll do councillor Ben Garner first.
Thanks Neil. Ben Garner councillor for Azzley and Robin Hood.
Can we move on to councillor Lisa Mulhern?
Thank you Chair, councillor Lisa Mulhern, Azzley and Robin Hood.
Thank you Lisa. Now to councillor Renshaw. Is councillor Renshaw there?
Sorry Chair, I was trying to get to him, sorry. My name's councillor Renshaw and I'm representative of Azzley and Robin Hood.
Thank you Chair. Right, can we move on to Moly North councillor Finnegan?
Robert Finnegan, Moly North.
And councillor Hutchinson?
Councillor Hutchinson, Moly North.
And councillor Gettings?
Councillor Bob Gettings, Moly North.
And let's move on to Moly South councillor Elliot.
Councillor Elliot here, Moly South.
And councillor Kidger as well.
Winkidger councillor for Moly South.
And now moving on to councillor Galton from Rothwell.
Yes councillor Galton representing Rothwell Ward which includes Oulton, Woodlesford and Carlton as well.
Thank you Stuart. Councillor Chapman I think finally.
Yeah councillor Chapman also representing Rothwell.
Thank you. Right, can we move on to agenda item number one? Back to you Andy I think.
Right, thank you Chair. Under agenda item number one, there are no appeals against the refusal of inspection of documents. Under agenda item two, there are no items which to exclude the pressing public from. Under agenda item number three, there are no late items as such. We do have some supplementary information to agenda item eight, the finance report which has been published today and sent to members. Under agenda item number four, do any members have any declarations of pecuniary interest to make? No. Agenda item five, we've no apologies for absences. And under agenda item six, the open forum, there have been no submissions in time for the meeting today. Thank you Chair, so if I can pass back to you now.
Thank you Andy. Right, we'll move on to item seven, which are the minutes from the last meeting. The last meeting was 2nd of December 2019, so it's been some time since we've met as a full committee. So I'll go through the meetings on pages seven to 12 of the agenda. Now I'll do it as a page turning exercise if any issues or matters of accuracy or matters arising from page seven. If you can raise your virtual hand or if indeed wave your hand physically. I can't see anything on that, page eight. No issue, page nine. Page 10, any matters in page 10 now? And finally page 11. Well, I'll take the silence and responses as approval of the minutes and therefore when I'm in a position to actually sign them, I will physically sign them as it's as a true and correct record. Thank you everybody. Let's move on to item eight, which is the Outer South Community Committee Finance Report. And I think Kimberley are going to introduce this.
I am, thank you Chair.
Thank you.
So the finance report starts on page 13 of your report and this report details capital, revenue, wellbeing and youth activity fund position for 2020-21 financial year. If I can start you at paragraph 17 through 19, this provides a summary of revenue allocation to date. And on table one on page 16, it shows a total of £121,650 already allocated this year to projects and it leaves a remaining balance to be spent of £42,125.85. If I can then go down to paragraph 22, there's two items, two projects for considerations. One, like I say, is paragraph 22 and the second's a late item. So if members are asked to consider the projects and indicate if they support them or not, so I'll start with the first one and that is from Rothwell Junior Park Run. Now the total project cost is £4,000 and we're asking today of an amount proposed from wellbeing of £1,000 and an amount proposed from youth activity of £1,000 as well. So it's £2,000 they're looking for altogether, but we are wanting to split it for wellbeing and youth activity and that's for the Rothwell Ward. So can I ask if we have support for that or not?
Yes.
Yeah.
Support, yeah, happy. Thank you everybody. So the next report is on your late item and that is access to track training and this is from Rothwell Harriers. The total project cost is £1,800 and that is what we're asking for from wellbeing funds and this is a Rothwell project and the grants for funds training for Rothwell Harriers. Can I ask if we support that one?
Happy to support.
Lovely, thank you.
Chair.
Anybody wish to comment on this?
Yes please Chair, if that's alright. You'll note that these are substantial investments and they're all in the same area of activity. And that's because as councillors, we're wanting to develop a relationship with those two organisations which are probably going to be the most effective at enabling physical activity, especially amongst the young and those on lower incomes as we come out of Covid. We are going to be, as I said, adding value to the investment that we're making in a reciprocal fashion from those groups in terms of making sure that those who other people might call hard to reach are actually accessing physical activity. So it's an ongoing process and we'll report back later on in the year in terms of the the activities that it's generated. Thanks Chair.
Thank you councillor Galton. Does anybody else wish to comment before we formally agree? The approval of the projects? No? Right, I think I've heard approvals, I mean I don't suppose anybody's against it, in which case can I take it that the project is approved?
Yep.
Yep.
Everybody saying yeah? So yes, fine, let's move on then Kimberley.
Thank you Chair. So I've also included a breakdown of spend today of the Covid funds, as you can see on table two, this is on page 17, and this shows a total spend so far of £30,950. And it leaves a remaining balance of £9,084.90 still to spend to help the pandemic and towards that. So if I can then take you on to paragraph 23, this shows approved projects that have been approved outside the committee meetings and then there's three projects, they are all included in table one of your wellbeing table. If I can then move you down to paragraph 26, this just features four projects that have taken place that were funded by the Outer South Community Committee and two of those were out of Covid funds. So unless anybody wants to comment on those, I'll move on to table three, which is on page 21. This outlines total of £34,868,90 allocated on youth activity projects so far during this financial year and we still have a balance left of £23,814.0. I'll then take you on to the small grants.
Can I come in?
Yeah.
Please Chair. Just on the youth activities fund, the Covid outbreak board requested nearly five, six weeks ago now of the exec, I believe councillor Cooper, that the AF funding be unring fenced for contributions towards Covid based initiatives. We've since had another four meetings of the Covid outbreak meets aboard and still we're waiting on a resolution on that request. I wondered if it's something that the Community Committee could actually put forward to the councillor Cooper, the exec board for this, to maybe expedite the request or solution on such request please.
Yes, I'm happy to do that councillor Hutchinson. I mean I've just been in a meeting of community chairs with councillor Cooper and the update on the AF fund was that there is going to be a review of any outstanding projects that haven't been completed this year with the view that because of the expected restrictions that exist, national restrictions on Covid, that virtually all activities will be suspended for the next four or five months. So therefore, you know, that would move towards that no money can be spent on those remaining activities that we've scheduled or the projects that have been approved so far, but the offices are going to do a review of all projects that are in place but not finished on October the 1st and to see what funds may be needed because obviously some maybe can be produced, can be delivered virtually, but if they can't, then it's likely that will be suspended.
Yeah, but I think the request was more in the case of the ones that aren't going to happen, that that money is to be able to be spent more freely on the Covid initiatives such as food banks and stuff like that. Obviously time is of the essence with this, especially with Christmas coming up, that the importance of a solution or a resolution for the request is expedited.
I will put the request forward as soon as possible after this meeting and I'll make sure that you get an answer to the question you raised.
Okay, thanks Chair.
Chair, could I just comment on the last couple of paragraphs please? I know all of us have got our hands up as well.
Go on councillor.
Thank you, just related to that last paragraph and the last paragraph on the youth activities fund, the Halloween festival on the Azzley and Robin Hood column, although that couldn't go ahead as it did last year at Tingley Community Centre for obvious reasons. The money was, the Halloween activity packs sent out using that money to pupils at Black Gates East Azzley and I believe it was for, I may be wrong, for, thank you councillor on having nodded there, just before Halloween, which were really well received. So just like to thank officers who were involved with that, just as the Halloween festival as last year couldn't be delivered. Also on the form of paragraph, just like to thank of course Tickleton Food Bank who were delivering in conjunction with West Azzley and Tingley Methodist Churches as well, that we and other wards have given Covid funding towards too. And WF3 Kindness who were, as you can read, sent out food packages and kindness packages on top of that, which have been sent to people in need from Leeds City Council through groundwork, so really good work by both of those projects.
That's good, thank you, thank you Ben. I can see two further hands up, so can we have councillor Finnegan followed by councillor Galton?
Very, very briefly Chair, is it not bizarre that we have to ask permission from an executive board member to spend our money that has been paid by our council taxpayers? I find it utterly bizarre that we have all of these problems and challenges that we're facing and we have to ask permission from the exec board member to spend the funds that are allocated to us. It's utterly bizarre, why is that?
I mean I think what Andy as I understand is asking for is that the youth activity fund is spent on non-youth activity activities. So I think we just need to make sure that we're still conforming with the governance of the council.
Should be down to us Chair, it shouldn't be down to the executive member to decide what we can and can't spend our money on, that's what we're elected to do.
I don't think it's down to the executive member and what I would like to confirm is that we are still complying with the governance and the constitution of the council, that we've allocated money for youth activity and I think councillor Hutchinson is recommending that we spend this on Covid activities. I understand where the request comes from, but I just want to make sure that we are still abiding by the constitution of the council.
Shouldn't take six weeks to get a decision out.
Well, I mean as I say, I'll do it in the next 24 hours, so let's hope I can move it a bit quicker. Right, can I move on to councillor Galton?
Yes, thanks Chair. I was wanting to refer back, sorry, to the Money Buddies report. And I'd like more information from the organisation in terms of, it talks about sessions, but I'm not sure if that just means that's when they're available or how many people they've had sessions with. And I'd like to understand more the financial gains measurement that they're referring to as part of their performance management.
I can come in there Chair, yeah, I can forward you the full report and if you've got any further questions, I will take that to the group and go back to you.
Right, thank you Kimberley, thank you Stuart. See councillor Lisa Mulhern? You want to speak later?
Thank you Chair, sorry, I was waving my physical hand before but I'm using the proper mechanism through the raised hand function now. So I was wanting to come in on a similar point to councillor Garner, the fact that we've not been able to have a physical kind of meeting for young people and do the activities that we'd originally planned at the start of the year, I think hasn't stopped us from, for instance, doing some of the youth work activities, our youth service, youth matters groups have still been doing, supporting local communities. And also the Halloween activities that we had funded, that we then worked through the schools, who obviously pupils still attending schools throughout this lockdown. And we've been able to support young people then to have activities that they could do during the half term break that were distributed through the schools. So I think really we do need to look very carefully at how we spend the youth activities fund. There are reasons why we distinguish between different pots of funding in our community committee areas and the youth activity fund is a pot of fund that has been used to support young people and families. And also we have always determined how to use that funding by consulting with young people. So I'd really just caution that we have a subgroup of this committee that determines how those funds are recommended to be spent, that that is done jointly with young people and both the fact that schools are still operating through, we could actually engage with young people through those schools and through youth matters groups online to be able to consult with them around how they'd like to see that funding being spent. And I think we can quite easily do that in a way that actually meets their needs by working with them rather than people in this room determining for them how that money should be spent and putting it into different pots of money. So that's kind of the thing I'd like to say and I just think it's important to remember that young people have been some of the hardest hit by this pandemic and we've got obviously Christmas break coming up, we know the issues that we've had in terms of hardship through school holidays. It would be great I think for us to be thinking about how we might quickly work with young people to see what we can do to support them through the coming Christmas break and February half term break in creative ways that support them rather than saying there's money sat there that hasn't been spent because the things we originally allocated it to can't happen and putting it into a different pot for a different purpose.
Yeah, thank you Lisa, yes, I think very important points and I will bear in mind what you've said when I communicate with councillor Cooper as well. Right, back to Kimberley I think, we've gotten to page 22 I think with the.
Councillor Galton's got his hand up again Chair.
Councillor Galton, yes, you want to come in?
Yeah, thanks Chair, I was stimulated into responding further by councillor Mulhern's comments because I am aware of course that some of the budget cuts that are happening are focusing on activities that youth, the youth in our areas enjoy, like the Windmill Youth Club and some of the alternatives which are being proposed by the council in terms of, well those groups that have been affected can always accommodate themselves elsewhere. I think there's a great big question mark over the ability to relocate and actually some of these youth clubs might have higher costs. So it seemed on your report back from the Chair's committee Chair, that there was an implication that the centre might end up reclaiming the budget for this year and using it as a saving in their budget calculations and we would no longer have access to that money, whereas I would say Chair, in the spirit of councillor Finnegan, that we actually make sure that this is an investment fund, it's like a reserve for our young people whose need, as councillor Mulhern said, has not depleted under the current circumstances when they can't access the activities that they usually would, it's actually increased. So when we come out of this situation, the cost of such activity will probably escalate and therefore if we have managed to keep a reserve of youth activities funding, we can then respond more appropriately for some of those services that the council has put at risk by closing the venues that they're actually hosted in.
I mean I think it's an important point they make Stuart and I don't think we can say with any certainty what will happen with the AF fund and whether we'll be able to take forward everything that's not spent, but again it's another point that I need to clarify. I will certainly deal with that and again, as I said to councillor Hutchinson, I will let you have details of the outcome of my conversations, albeit they may be virtual with councillor Cooper. Right, I'm happy to go back to Kimberley now.
Thank you Chair. So I'll take you to small grants now, the small grants position is summarised next in paragraph 29 and to date the Community Committee has approved one project. I know we normally have quite a few small grants, but we've just not had them coming in and I'm sure it's due to the pandemic and lockdowns and all that kind of thing. So going on, moving on to skips and to date the Community Committee has approved two community skips, this is shown on table five. And if I can then take you down to table six again on page 22, this details the capital budget position, there is a balance of £56,432.20 still available to spend. And then lastly, paragraph 32 on page 23 outlines the community infrastructure levy allocation, there is a balance of £123,916.17 available to spend and this is broken down into £122,479 for Azzley and Robin Hood and £1,436.27 for Rothwell. And that's it for me unless anybody has any questions about that report.
And thank you Kimberley, that was excellent. Yes, thank you. Any further questions? I can see councillor Finnegan, you've got your hand up, so you've got a question for?
Well, it's not so much a question, I think it's more a comment, I think councillor Elliot is wanting to comment on the speed indication devices on Albert Road and Rain Road, I think she struggles to put her hand up I think. Don't know what you're doing there Neil, but there we are, I've got your big hairy hand in the way, but I'm sure councillor Elliot can speak for herself on that.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, thank you, I'm sorry I just missed that, I'm reading all this from a telephone and I just missed it, I'm terribly sorry. We've been delighted with that Sid, in Rain Road, it was really needed, the speed of the traffic is absolutely dreadful and I do feel that it has worked a little, we could do with another one going the other way. This is for traffic coming down from Moly and we need one going up the hill too. I know perhaps up the hill people don't speed as much, but I think they probably do here in Rain Road. People use it as a shortcut and I'm afraid it was never meant as a shortcut for the volume of traffic that's on it now. The pavements are quite narrow and it was always a B road at Rain Road, so wonderful that we've got it and hopefully it will cut the speed of the traffic down as we go along and we would like, if it's possible, to have another one please.
I can just come in there Chair, we did build in a bit of extra money so that in six months it can be turned around the other way.
I'm aware of that, but I'd like one at the moment going the other way.
Right, okay, I'll contact you after this meeting councillor Elliot tomorrow.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Well, thank you councillor Elliot. Can we move on the agenda, move down to item nine, which is the update report? And I think it's probably back to Kimberley to introduce the update report, but we would obviously be looking for the champions from each area to report on their activities, their theme, so first to Kimberley.
Thank you Chair, it is, so we saw our update report on the page 25 and I'd just welcome again any of the champions to come in and give updates on their sections. With the children and families subgroup on paragraph three, the next children and families subgroup had been rescheduled for the 1st of December, which is what is published on the minutes, but I do have to say we are going to actually have to reschedule it again. So the dates I will send out to everybody tomorrow and it's something that can't really be avoided.
If I could come in there Kimberley, yeah, I'm looking forward with unfortunately Covid what's happened, I think we still, you know, we need to work hard with these children and, you know, they've had an af year and it's up to us to improve that for them next year, so I'm looking forward to a super bumper children's get together and I'd like to take it to Moly Town Hall again, so I look forward to fellow councillors supporting me please, thank you.
Thank you councillor Kidger. So if I can pass this next bit over to Andy, as we have a vacancy for the environment.
Sorry Chair, just in terms of the children's subcommittee, is that still going to take place before Christmas, just in light of the discussions we've previously had about the youth activities fund?
Yes, it's just that date's awkward, so we're just going to change it, maybe, you know, within the week, that same week, we'll put it out to see what's convenient to everybody.
Right, thank you. Right, okay.
Thank you, Lisa. Can I also add that, again, from the, the chair's briefing that I've been at earlier today, that there are still plans ahead with the youth summit, albeit a virtual one in the first quarter of next year. That's first quarter in January, in January to March, when I say first quarter.
I've actually written some of that if you want me to give you a bit of an update on what we're going to suggest. So we're suggesting to contact the schools in December to let them know what we're planning. And what we want to do is send out like a lesson plan, first of all, so they can do some of the stuff that they would have done at the youth forum, actually at school and at their own leisure, because we know how much extra schools are under at the moment. You know, and we really want them to engage in the process. But then at the end of it, once they've done all that, we'd collect that information in and still have a formal youth summit. But it would just be online in March. So they're, they're the vague plans and obviously that will be discussed and gone through at the subgroup. Thank you. So again, if I can pass to Andy now for the next bit on environment?
Thank you, Kim. Yeah, paragraph four of the report refers to the vacancy for the environmental champion. Councillor Dawson, as Chair of the Community Committee, has volunteered to cover this role for the remainder of the municipal year. Are members happy for councillor Dawson to do so?
Yeah, happy with that.
Yep. Okay. So we'll, we'll appoint councillor Dawson to that role for the remainder of the year. I'm back to you, Kim.
So going down to paragraph five, which is community safety forum, and we had a safety forum that we had to reschedule back in March. Unfortunately, at the moment, with, as social gatherings are still not allowed. We just will reschedule it as soon as public meetings are allowed again. Councillor Hutchinson, do you want to update anything there?
No, not really. Just I think with the safety forum that we tried, that we were developing across the four wards where we would sort of invite the police and other people along, as well as the community. I don't think it will have the same impact or maybe the same reach if we tried to do it online. So, which is probably a reason why we have basically just paused it until we can actually get back into, into venues again. And then just to make a note, obviously, there's an increase, obviously, in, in, I guess, well, domestic violence, antisocial behaviour between neighbours and such like. And again, without sort of preaching, it's down to the fatigue that people are experiencing with the ongoing restrictions. That's about it. Thanks, Kim.
Thank you, councillor Hutchinson.
Can I say that councillor Gann has got his hand up? So can we just ask councillor Gann to comment?
Thanks, Chair. It's just in, in the section there where it goes through word by word, what the police have been doing. Does mention for Aardsley, Robin Hood, the anti-social use of vehicles, which includes speeding. There's lots of speed operations happened in the ward recently by the neighbourhood policing team. So I'd like to thank them for that. And obstructed parking by Aardsley Reservoir, Higmore Road especially. The police have been out yesterday, I believe, ticketing obstructed parkers. So thank you. And we are having ongoing conversations between neighbourhood policing team themselves and Yorkshire Water about the reservoir. And I hope to take precedence soon on that, pending, pending news from Yorkshire Water.
Thank you, Ben. Go back to Kimberley.
I think councillor Galton had his hand up, Chair.
Yeah, councillor Galton. I missed your hand, sorry.
Thanks, Chair. I was just wondering, as part of our subgroup, why we have them, if you see what I mean. Are there any areas where we have decided to concentrate on a particular issue which is affecting all of our wards in common? And focus on it and do something in particular about it. So the, the crime stuff that we've just had in terms of statistics, it talks about general issues around antisocial behaviour, but I just wondered if there was something that we could focus on. So for instance, I know that we've had an issue locally in Rothwell, where we've had a lot of antisocial quad bike usage and scrambler bike usage. And I believe that's also been happening up at the reservoir in, is it, is it East Aardsley?
Yeah.
And
Seventeen.
And, and as people are trapped at home and they get this feral element that think they can do what they like, I think it would be really useful sometimes. I know that the police are saying that they like to do the four Es, which is low impact, not giving people fines during Covid. But I think on some of the particularly egregious stuff, like people who use quad bikes and scrambler bikes and trash neighbourhoods. I mean, the latest instance for us is, is they've, they've caused thousands of pounds worth of damage on a, on a farmer's field as well. And they've damaged parks owned land and they've made people's lives a misery for weekends on a trot in terms of noise nuisance. And it would be good if we had something very focused like that, that the local policing team could say, yeah, we're going to take that seriously and we're going to do something about it. So sorry for the long introduction. Is there anything like that, councillor Hutchinson, that, that, that we can all work on together?
So it's very similar to what we had started with regards to the safety forums, where we had, we started off with it being in Morley North because we had a knife crime incident, well, an actual stabbing outside the school. So very soon after that, the forum was, we had the police, we had the fire brigade there as well, because it was just before bonfire night this time last year. And then we also had, a guy came along, maybe Kim can help me, where he came from, the guy, the knife experience.
Yeah, it was from a charity called Life Experience and he's focused on knife crime and all that kind of thing.
And then so it was basically an open forum with the police taking questions and around some of the things specific that the, the community were really concerned about. The fact that there had been a very recent teenage stabbing. And then the idea then was then to take it into Morley South. And that was the one that was planned for March. And it would begin contacting the local ward councillors at that point to see what is of importance at that point. So I think, I think it was around antisocial behaviour at that point. So each, towards each quarter, each, each ward would have been targeted and the, and the members targeted or asked at that point, what is concerning them on a safety point for that ward? And then we would have concentrated the, the, the forum on that topic. But again, like I said, since March, we didn't have the one in March. I don't think it's going to be something that will work well on a Zoom platform because we want the sort of the community and the interaction there. And unless members think it would be worthwhile doing something, we can certainly try and bring something together on a, a virtual platform.
Councillor Mulherran, do you want to speak? And then councillor Renshaw?
Sorry, it's a little while ago and I just wanted to flag up in the report, it refers to meetings with the Morley neighbourhood policing teams taking place online. And I just think the report should be updated to reflect that the Rothwell neighbourhood policing team have been meeting the local councillors online as well. Just so that it's, it's clear that both sets of police and will members are engaging in that way.
I think it's not put on the report because obviously it's just, it was myself that met, well, the, the Morley North, Morley South councillors that met with the NPT. So obviously unaware of the meeting that was had in the other wards. So I guess that's why it's been missed off.
Okay, thank you. But if we can update to reflect the fact that with the neighbourhood policing team at the Robin, at the Rothwell End as well.
And councillor Renshaw, did you want to speak?
I'd like to ask councillor Hutchinson if any discussion has been held regarding the use of fireworks, because that seems to be a general issue throughout all the wards. So I wondered if there'd been any discussion with the police about how to address that and what actions could be taken to try and stop people from using them abusively.
I think the microphone's on top of your head, so I can hardly hear what, what you're saying.
I did unmute though. I repeat that then. Has anything been done to address the issue of, of the misuse of fireworks? Because that seems to be a common element throughout the whole of the far wards in the outer south. So maybe some discussion should be held about that.
I did have a discussion with the fire chief from Morley Fire Station around the fireworks this year. I think the concern this year was more around the fact that there weren't large scale shows, fireworks shows, people were having them in their back gardens. And there was also a report that came back out from Lucy Ledbetter, the inspector, that they'd had 900 calls over the firewall, the bonfire night the fifth of November. But yeah, it's certainly something that can be addressed in the future.
Can I just say, you've, you mentioned Morley again, but of course there's the Rothwell NPT and there's a Rothwell Fire Station as well. So are there any discussions going on with both or is it just all Morley based?
I get more, more Morley based, I guess. I'm more than happy to reach out from across the whole of the outer south. Or if people are having those discussions, to invite me to them, I'd be more than happy to join.
Can I say, councillor Elliot, have you raised your hand?
Yes, thank you. Whilst Andrew was speaking about having contacted the fire service and the police, we were, we had a report from Lucy Ledbetter saying that we had, as Andrew said, there were 900 incidents. But she said, she did say that none of them were serious. They weren't serious incidents and which she was very pleased about. And so are we. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Elliot. I can't see any more hands. So back to Kimberley to continue with your, with the report.
Thank you, Chair. And as we've discussed antisocial behaviour and police, I'll, I'll sort of move on to the employment and skills part of the report, which is paragraph eight. And you have a breakdown there of the universal credit that is being claimed for Leeds. It does say that the revised figure of number of people claiming universal credit in Leeds that were unemployed in September has gone up to 4,284, 884, sorry. And this has increased by 82% since March. Councillor Dawson, do you have anything to add for that part?
Just, members will be aware, massive increase in universal credit. Obviously, we know the reasons behind that. But the impact that it's had on families in the outer south, you know, can't be minimised. It's, it's been a dramatic increase. But still to say that the outer south is still, the rates are lower than the rest of Leeds and indeed the rest of Yorkshire and the country. But still, it's been a very worrying trend and, 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 you know, well, I won't say much more than, you know, it just says a lot of people are struggling in the outer south with, with, with the pandemic and the result, the economic outfall from that. No, I mean, I don't think I've got anything specific to add apart from what I've just said. Thank you, Kimberley.
Thank you, Chair. So moving on to paragraph 11, which is the older person subgroup meeting that met on the second of November. I know councillor Elliot wants to give an update on this. You're, you're on mute, councillor Elliot.
Dawson had muted me earlier and then I came back myself. Can I say that we had actually a very good meeting to say that Carol Law from Morley Elderly Action and Mandy Farr from Rothwell Liverstone couldn't be with us. Current councillor Renshaw and councillor Galton were there. And, and it was a very, very positive meeting, actually. We did have, know that Morley Elderly Action had done very well in taking out afternoon tea bags. That's what they were. Morishans provided the carrier bags and an afternoon tea was put in these bags. And they were taking to parts of Morley and, and to East Aardsley and Robin Hood. And Mandy Farr did the same. Because they weren't with us, they, we, we, we were sitting really. And we're having an extra meeting on December the 7th, when they are going to be there along with other people. The police came to that meeting and, and they're doing very well, are the police. And they're working with the Herbert Protocol, which deals with people with dementia who are out and about and who can't find their way home. So they're very aware of that, are the police now. It took them a while to realise what it was all about, but they're really au fait with it at the moment. And they, we had a person there from housing. And, and she, she was telling us about how they, she was new actually in the position. This was another difficulty. She didn't know too much. She couldn't tell us too much, but she's coming again. It was to the next meeting, housing retirement lives. And she does know what's happening on the one hand, because she's always been involved, but she's just newly taken over from someone who's left. So Kim has already begun the process, ready for next October for the, for the events, for the International Day of the Older Person. And she's moving forward with that. So the next meeting, December 7th, if anybody would like to come, you'd be very welcome. And we'll see what way forward. Thank you.
Councillor Renshaw, did you, you've got your hand raised? Do you want to?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I'd just like to crack to councillor Elliot. We actually delivered our own in Aardsley, Robin Hood Ward. We took our own afternoon tea bags out and met up with Morley Elderly Action. Unfortunately, they had to be delivered late or two weeks after the event had been planned due to somebody unfortunately coming down with Covid or being in contact at Morley Elderly Action. However, it was discussed, and I think councillor Galton was the one who probably suggested that we don't specifically have to have it on a set day. We can hold our older people's event whenever, International Day for Older People. And so next year, moving forward, it was suggested that it depends when it's best for those people to have something delivered and what, what exactly it is. And it will be up to us to select our own organisation. If, if, if things don't fit or suit what our needs are within our wards, then we'll be able to request that someone other than Morley Elderly Action or Rothwell Liverstone come and deliver. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Can I just?
Can I come back in, Chair, please?
You can in a minute. Can I just bring councillor Galton in?
Sorry, thank you.
And then you can come in during, yeah.
Right, thank you.
Councillor Galton first?
I was just flicking between screens, looking at the agenda paper. Yes, councillor Renshaw records correctly that, that we raised this because of course, just having one day to do things on sort of misses the point, doesn't it, sometimes? Especially if it's meant to be behaviours that you're changing and you would hope to do that all the time, wouldn't you? It was a little bit disappointing that we weren't able to actually focus activity on International Day of Older People, on the theme that they were hoping to generate interest on, which was making sure that older people are appreciated for what they can do, rather than being seen as people who receive services because of things of what they can't do. And we did notice that there were lots of other organisations in Leeds that were doing activity that reflected that. And that we could potentially in future work far more closely with other groups that are responding to the International Day of Older People. So that we can prepare a little bit better to deliver activity which was associated with the theme for that year. If we are going to commit to having an, an event in some way. I, I quite like the, the virtual event as opposed to a physical event. Because that means that we get more stuff out. Because that means that we get more stuff out to people as well. Secondly, so that's the active bit. I have noticed that the champion element that councillor Elliot has got is health and wellbeing and adult social services. And we very often talk about the elderly end of the spectrum when we're discussing this at an outer south committee level. And I think we might be able to focus a little bit more on some of the other elements. And that there's a, there's a report further down, if you'll excuse me, I'm going to have a look at the agenda, which is all about the physically, physical activity and making sure that we we enable more people to be physically active more often. And I know that's more councillor Malherin's bag as portfolio holder. But I do think we do need to respond to it on a local level. And there's an element in there, and it's quite hard to give it a paragraph because it hasn't got a paragraph number. But it talks about the analysis that was done by Leeds Beckett University about what obstacles there are to people physically getting active. And one of the things that I noted was that quite a lot of it is to do with environmental factors and the environment that they actually live in and maybe also economic factors. So this is perfect for you Chair, in your dual role as environmental champion and obviously the economic development end as well. That we could actually focus on some of the stuff here in terms of, can we audit ourselves in our localities in each ward in terms of how we are enabling people to get access to physical activity, especially if they have disabilities or if they're part of other minority groups that find it hard to do so. And I think it'd be quite a good exercise for us all to do jointly as an outer south area, which other parts of the city could then hopefully duplicate. But it's quite a focused area in terms of who are currently missing out and how we could do something about it. And it would cross reference, as I said, councillor Elliot's and your portfolios locally.
No, I think it's a very good point and I'll take on board Stuart and I'll look to come back with some out to south proposals.
Quite right, right.
Councillor, do you want to say something?
Yes, I do. I just want to say that we have never held the Day of the Older Person's events in our area on the Day of the Older Person, which is the 1st of October. They've always been on different days, so that hasn't changed one little bit. It's happened in the past and it will happen again in the future if that has to be so. And as regards taking the food out in the bags, the tea bags out, Karen says she took them out in her ward. I said the bags were there to take out. I didn't say Morley Elderly Action had taken them out and if I did, I didn't mean to. Because councillor Keatia took those party bags out, I call them party bags, afternoon tea bags out in our ward. And as far as Stuart is concerned with my being the chairman of this committee, the health and wellbeing and adult social care this year has been, right from May, has been almost impossible. We haven't known where we were. It's something totally different, nothing we could really get our teeth into. We haven't known whether people could mix or they couldn't mix. We haven't been used to doing things as we are now having meetings on Zoom. And of course, if it happened again, we'd be ready for it. But we hope to goodness nothing like this ever befall the world again. It's been an absolute dreadful time. So it is something that we can look after because as we're coming out of the pandemic and the vaccines are given and people are feeling braver and the government have been able to relax things. Well, then it's time that we do get together and try and move forward for that keep fit and for people to look at their health and wellbeing and with the older people too. It's quite a job and quite a lot to do, but we will have to do it. It's so important. And of course, this goes again to the closing of Lewisham. We are wanting to keep that place open. If we want to have events for all age groups, places like Lewisham. And it has to be remembered that in Morley South, we have only that one community hall. You can discount the town hall, that is not suitable for the things that happen in the community halls. And for us in Morley, it's essential that we keep that open. We're going to be encouraging people to have exercise. There's loads of parks on there at Lewisham for outdoor exercise as well as indoor exercise. So I look forward for when the pandemic, and perhaps we're speaking before the pandemic ends and try and get something in place for when people can get together again. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Elliot. I've got three more people want to speak before we go back to Kimberley. Councillor Renshaw first, you want to come back?
Thank you Chair. I'd just like to say that previously we've tried to eliminate the age level by which services from this group were delivered. However, because of the older people wanting specific services, and my argument has always been things, people can become in need of support at any age. And therefore I do think that the age that's been placed within this group needs to be moved aside and so that everybody can have an opportunity to access support and need when required. Thank you Chair.
Thank you Karen. I mean, I think that in some ways was the essence of councillor Dalton's point, that it's health and wellbeing for all adults, not just for elderly people. But move on to councillor Gana please.
Thanks Chair, just sort of weaving together the various points that have been made. There's two members who sit on the local care partnerships. I think we mentioned it in the last consultative committee actually, about maybe the members who sit on the local care partnerships, Morley and LS2526, either reporting to the main group here or perhaps to councillor Elliot's subgroup. So that can be then included in the agenda and, you know, especially those younger people where the local care partnerships are doing work as well as the older people working with all of us. And we have that route in and out as well as through the two designated members.
Yeah, thank you Ben. Councillor Malheron, I believe you've got your hand raised.
Thank you Chair. Really like to just come in and support councillor Dalton's suggestion that maybe we have a look as a community committee at what we could do in terms of supporting people to get active. And we know that clearly it has really positive health benefits, both for physical and mental wellbeing. And I think, you know, the report that is set out briefly in the agenda today that was done by Leeds Beckett University does really back up that need to look at prevention as well and how we actually support people to maintain wellbeing. And there are groups identified clearly in that that we know are less likely to be active and how we might locally support those groups to become physically active and to maintain that. I think that would be actually a really good piece of work that we could do locally. Maybe we could get Jill Keddie or somebody in from Active Leeds to come and present to us at the next meeting in terms of what we might consider doing locally.
Yeah, I can organise that Chair.
Yeah, I mean, I'll speak offline with Kimberley and we'll look to do something on that, yeah. Yeah, thank you Lisa. I think I'm back to you Kimberley, on your report.
I think councillor Elliot's got a hand up.
Yes, I just do want to say that as Chair this year, as we said, it's been a difficult year. But in previous years, when someone else has been Chair, then could have been the time to bring all age groups in. It's funny though, it's only just been thought about now. So that's the end, I've nothing more to say, thank you.
Well, I was thinking about looking forward, not looking back, but let's move on.
Well, we have to look backwards to look forward Neil.
Well, let's go back to Kimberley and let us finish your report, thank you.
Thank you Chair. So I'll move us on now to the community centre subgroup. And I do know that they met earlier today, so councillor Gettings, would you like to give an update?
Yes, paragraph 17 mentions the fact that the group would meet at the end of November while we did meet at one o'clock today. And we did. Can you hear me?
Yes, keep going Bob.
We received and revealed all the community centres in outer south. And issues like the security at Morley Town Hall was brought forward and other issues. But the main concern I think was the proposed closure of Lewisham Park Community Centre and Windmill Youth Community Centre. The committee, we're not happy that this community centre subcommittee have not been consulted on this. And we were informed by phone after the proposal had already been put forward. Well, that's just not good enough. We believe that proper consultation must take place in the future regarding these two premises or any other community centre. It seems stupid to have a community centre subcommittee and propose to go forward to the executive where the community centre subcommittee has had no information about it or didn't even know it was going to be put forward. Therefore, we believe that hopefully, from comments already made by fellow councillors, there's obviously real concern, real concern in the community as well because it's got out and everybody's talking about it. It's absolutely ridiculous that we haven't been consulted and that I've looked at this issue in a sensible way. We think we should be looking at the possible business plan for each centre. And we should also be looking at what the community needs are in each community so that the community buildings could be put to best community use. And those are some of the issues that we're going to be hopefully put forward. And because we haven't met since January because of the Covid, we've decided that we must meet more regularly and focus on some of these issues. Thank you.
Thank you Bob. I mean, I would say that, I mean, I'll bring Robert in in a second. I mean, I think it's important that we do have the voice of councillors and the community in terms of the process that has been announced recently of on Windmill and on Lewisham Park. I think it's, yeah, I think that's very important that. I would like the community committee to actually discuss the proposals. I mean, we are going into a period of consultation, that's the point of the announcement, that we are going into a consultation period before the executive does make a decision. So I think it might be important to have a meeting fairly soon Bob.
Yes, well, I mean, interesting enough, on the day after I had the phone call from Sean on the issue, I met with Sean and Glen O'Malley at Gilson Meeting Hall about future youth provision. And he was not aware that it was under discussion about closing these two youth centres, which are probably the two main youth centres within his portfolio. So I think he was absolutely shocked and I didn't realise that he didn't know either. So I think, you know, the communication skills there were not good. And I think it's a bit of an insult to the community centre subcommittee not to have advanced warning or be consulted. It just seems absolutely unbelievable. Sorry, thank you.
It's all right, as I said, we are going into a period of consultation. See councillor Finnegan wants to speak.
Thank you Chair, as you know, you've probably been consulted, Andy Booth had a resolution which I've sent out there. Everybody can see on the chat at this particular point, I formally move that resolution. Unlike some interpretations of the reports, and I've got the reports in front of me at this particular point, I don't believe that it does say go out to consult on whether to close or not. I think the report says go out and consult on the savings that are relevant at the point where you do close both of these community centres. And I've got both reports in front of me at this particular point. Indeed, the executive director and I disagree fundamentally on what this report says. And even he accepts that the report could have been a lot clearer. Anyway, in a nutshell, we have a resolution that we are formally proposing at this particular point. We think that the closure of Lewisham is entirely utterly unacceptable. It serves the most deprived community in the outer south area committee area. And as such is relied upon by that community to provide the help and support that it needs across all age bands and all spectrums. The savings that are quoted in the actual report are to say the least questionable, including £22,000, which is for LCC staff costs, not which I can actually identify. I think this is costings that relate to the previous full-time caretaker that we had there at that particular point. Other costs, along with the water services costing more than the gas and the electricity. And premises security services and other such things are all somewhat questionable. If you take out the staff costs, the savings here are £13,000. Now, I don't think that we should be picking on the poorest community in Morley and asking them to make sacrifices under these circumstances. Anyway, rather than rabbit on all night, Chair, I've put the resolution in front. I'm sure that I will get a second there on that and I'm sure that we'll be putting in the votes, thank you.
Can I say, I mean, we never take resolutions from the floor at meetings, so I mean, I'm not prepared to take one now.
I remember before.
To be honest.
I'd be happy to second that resolution councillor Finnegan. I don't think we can debate the resolution, I mean, it's not been shown to members beforehand, you know.
At this particular point, I specifically asked for the advice of the clerk to this particular one, who said that this was the way of proposing it, because I was quite happily circulated beforehand. If this is not accepted, then clearly it's just an attempt to suppress the discussion and the debate. And it doesn't help and assist that this seems to be led by political spite. It seems to be one of these proposals that is agreed at the centre without it coming out, as councillor Gettings has already said. And I will lose any faith whatsoever that this isn't already a done deal. And this is one of those agreements that is broken behind closed doors that shafts the people of Morley. So do as you will at this particular point. If there is no discussion and debate on this particular resolution, then it seems utterly pointless any of the other Morley colleagues continuing on with this particular meeting. It's a suppression of people's capacity to put a point of view across.
I mean, I think many people have spoken and I think it's, you know, people have put the view on Lewisham. And we know, if you like, the feelings of members and the feelings from the community. But I'm not prepared to take a resolution from the floor in that manner. I mean, it's not been tabled as an agenda item and.
Can the clerk assist us with this?
Is Andy there?
Yeah, yeah, sorry. If you can just bear with me a moment councillor Finnegan and Chair, I'm just seeking a little bit of further advice on this.
Thank you.
Chair, can I just say that as a children's champion to want to close the two youth groups in this area and we're a child-friendly city, you know, we are child-friendly and it's centred on children, but yet we're closing youth groups. Do you not agree Neil, that that's wrong? Have you no thought of on it Neil?
I have, I mean, my thought is that, I mean, the other requirement that we are trying to make as a county is to have a balanced budget. We've got a £119 million gap to make up.
In Morley South, we've got one, one community centre. And Assey and Robin Hood have got a few, no disrespect to the councillors, but they've got a few.
Can we just go back to?
It's one, one that you're closing. It's one that you're closing.
Wait, can we just go back to the numbers to clear up the governance matters?
The only one we've got. Well, it is.
Sorry Chair, I've just got a message coming through, I'll be with you as quick. Sorry, Chair. I've just got a message coming through. I'll be with you as quickly as I possibly can. Yeah. As councillor Finnegan's made a motion, and it has been seconded, then the committee should be taking a vote on it. But I just want you to hold on just a minute, just till we double check this, if that's okay.
Right. Yeah, we'll wait a minute then, and then we'll pause.
Chair, can I just, at this point, register my interest to speak as well when the solution comes back?
Yes, by all means, Andy. Go ahead, Miss Andy. Yeah.
I'll wait for Andy to come back with the resolution on the motion.
Right, Chair. As I previously mentioned, as councillor Finnegan has made a motion that has been seconded, the committee do need to take a vote on that.
Right then. In terms of, well, if that's what you're advising Andy, then I'll reverse my decision and we'll take the resolution. And I think we had a second there. I can't remember, was it councillor?
Chair, can I just comment?
Sorry, Ben, what do you want confirmation of?
Sorry, I just wanted to know if others could comment, as others have been allowed to before we got to a vote. I would just wait and see if that procedure was valid or not.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, by all means, you speak, Ben. You come on next, yeah.
Thank you. I think the decision by executive board was to consult rather than to close. So that's an important distinction. You know, and again, as we discussed at the community centre subgroup earlier today, I don't disagree with councillor Gettings about what you've said about, actually, we need a bit more local discussion about all our community centres. Asli and Robin Hood does have two, rather than loads. But, you know, take on board councillor Kidger, that Morley South just has the one.
More than two.
Community centre. And it's the youth, it's not the youth groups that have been closed, it's the centres. Just a really important distinction there, based on earlier comments as well. Just to clarify for other members and those who might be watching.
Thank you, councillor Garner. I think councillor Hutchison was next.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I guess if it is a decision to do a consultation only, then I'm guessing then that your fellow comrades are ill-informed when they find it necessary and appropriate to set up an online petition blaming Morley Town Council for the closure of Lewisham. And I guess then the question is, do we feel that, does the chair feel that that's appropriate, that his fellow comrades have done that?
I'll bring in councillor Mulholland next.
Thank you, Chair. The motion itself is inaccurate because it's referring to a decision to close. It's a decision to consult. So the motion itself is factually inaccurate. And I just want to make that point very clear. The consultation will be on a number of budget measures. These two centres are one of those measures across the city to fill the huge budget hole that you have already informed the committee that we have, which members are all aware of as a result of COVID. So I just want to be absolutely clear that that's a consultation. That's not a decision.
I think the actual reason.
Happy to be spot on.
There is quite accurate.
I'll bring you in in a minute, Robert. I've got councillor Galton waiting as well. Stuart, over to you.
Thanks, Chair. Yes, on the issue of the community centres, I think councillor Mulholland may be strictly correct in terms of, oh, the council hasn't decided to close them, it's decided to consult on them. But that would mean that this committee couldn't have any opinion whatsoever on the buildings at all until it's actually been closed, because the council's consultations go on for a certain amount of time. But then there's still time in between that and the actual closure as well, where further consultations could take place. So really, this is just a statement of intent that we do not wish to have these centres closed. And that the council has indicated that that is their intention to close them. Otherwise, why would they have written the papers in question and presented them to executive board to go out to consultation, see if people agree with them? So it's sort of splitting hairs at the end of the day. And it shouldn't stop us actually taking a motion forward. And if those in charge of the council then choose to say, oh, well, you know, your motion isn't valid, at least the people that we represent will appreciate the sentiment behind that motion and the intention and the ambition for us to actually retain our community centres as centres of community life, not just simply buildings that the council's facilities management section has responsibility to maintain.
Thank you, Stuart. councillor Finnigan, do you want to speak again?
If I may, very briefly, to contradict councillor Mulholland, because I'm not sure she necessarily knew what she was voting for on the executive board when she voted for this. If you look at the paperwork, which is actually in front of me at this particular point, it refers you through to appendix 2B. Now, 2B is quite clear. It says, members are requested to consider the proposal to implement the efficiency savings identified in this report, including the closure of Lewisham Community Centre, Morley South, Alton Bywater, youth centre, Kipaks and Methley, Windmill Youth Centre, Rothwell. This will continue to provide community space, current users of the building concern while making revenue savings. Now, what the actual exec board decision is, agree the recommendations and the service review proposals, and that consultation commences. Now, what they're actually agreeing at exec board at this particular point is the recommendations. The recommendations are for closure. Now, all they're going to do is consult about the revenue savings at this particular point, presumably to see if it's too much, or to argue this rather bogus case of there are alternative community centres that we can put people in. So as Stuart says, whether I'm right, whether councillor Mulholland is right, is reasonably academic at this particular point. And even the executive director is clear in suggesting that the wording is not entirely clear at this particular stage. For the sake, for the sake of, to make sure that everybody's clear, and this community committee is clear that it opposes these particular closures, then I suggest that we put the resolution that's in front of colleagues, which has been confirmed as legitimate to the vote. And we'd like a recorded vote. Thank you, Chair.
Right. If there's no more indications to speak, we'll move to the vote on the resolution.
Sorry, Chair. Had indicated to speak when councillor Galton spoke. That's okay?
Go ahead. Yes, sorry.
I'll keep it brief. I've spoken already. But my point is that what Stuart said in terms of the motion, it doesn't actually say what Stuart said. It says clearly what councillor Finnegan has typed into the chat function, and it's factually inaccurate. This is going out to consultation as one of a number of budget proposals. And because the motion is factually inaccurate, I will be voting against it.
Any more speakers? Or can we move to the vote? Is that where we are?
Factually accurate move to the vote.
Well, we have a debate about whether it's factually accurate.
We think it is.
Right, Chair. A recorded vote's been requested. So would you like me to go through members to get their votes one by one? Yep. Okay. So I'm asking members to either vote for or against councillor Finnegan's motion or to abstain. So if I can start with councillor Chapman, please.
I'm for it.
In favour. Councillor Elliott?
In favour.
Councillor Finnegan?
In favour.
Councillor Garner?
Against the motion as put forward by councillor Finnegan.
Councillor Gettings?
For.
Councillor Galton? Sorry, you're muted, councillor Galton.
For.
For.
Councillor Hutchison?
For the motion, thank you.
Councillor Kidger?
For the motion.
Councillor Mulholland?
I'm voting against the motion.
Yeah. Councillor Renshaw?
I'm voting against the motion.
And councillor Dawson?
I'll vote against because of being inaccurate.
Okay. Right. With seven members voting for, the motion is carried.
Right, thank you. Thank you, Andy.
Hooray. Oh, sorry. That was muted, Chair.
Good news, Stadi, Stuart.
Are we?
Hooray from me, too.
Kimberley, I'm not, have you finished your report as such?
I've just got the appendix to go through. If you want me to go through the Facebook stuff, or you have all seen it, it's entirely up to you.
I think, as we've seen it, we'll take it as read. But thank you. Thank you for your report. And I think the only other item on the agenda is the date and time of the next meeting, which is the 15th of March 2001. So can I thank members for attending and thank members of the public that have joined online? And just wish you all a Merry Christmas and just hope that we get a vaccine delivered and can enjoy the new year. Right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Chair.
Best wishes, Neil. Thank you.
Bye.
Goodbye.